Good evening, everyone. May I call the meeting of the Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Education to order on Thursday, January 4th, 2024? Welcome to the Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Education Organization Meeting. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the Daily Record and on the district website on January 6th, 2023. A meeting notice was posted in all school buildings, the website, and Town Hall on December 27th, 2023. In addition, notice of the meeting date was posted at the municipal building, a copy of the notice filed with township clerk, and transmitted to other newspapers: The Daily Record, The Star Ledger, Precipiny Focus, Tap into Precipiny, The Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per law 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and on our video on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now going to review the election results. For membership to the Board of Education, three full-year terms. Wendy Wright, 2,733 votes. Andrew Chaffo, 2,389 votes. Timothy Barrios, 2,368 votes. The board attorney, Mrs. Gilfillan, will now administer the oath of office to the duly elected members. Will Mr. Barrios, Mr. Chaffo, and Mrs. Wright join Mrs. Gilfillan in front of the board tables, please?
I will now administer the oath of office. Please repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Tim Barrios.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Tim Barrios.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of member of a board of education.
Am not disqualified as a voter
I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And am not disqualified to serve due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJHS 18A:12-1.
And am not disqualified to serve due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJHS 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, new board members. I am now going to call the roll for the attendance of the board members. Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here.
Mrs. Golderer?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Raye?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
We will now have the election of our officers, starting with the president. Are there nominations for president of the Board of Education? Mrs. Abraham?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Mr. Andrew Chaffo for president. In this new year, Andy would be a welcome asset to the leadership of this board. Over the last 15 years, he has displayed deep humility, intelligence, and a hunger to do the work this district needs and deserves. His vast experience and commitment to this district speaks for itself. He connects with everyone, from students to parents, to administration and staff equally, and treats them with respect and care. He works hard on and off the board and pursues additional education to be a strong board member for this district. He has always been clear and concise in his communications and has shown the willingness to keep an open mind and genuinely acknowledge another point of view. For all these reasons and more, I am happy to nominate Mr. Chaffo for board president.
Are there any other nominations for president of the Board of Education? Mrs. Mayer?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Allison Cogan to be for the office of president. In July, the board was at an impasse on who should fill the position of president. County superintendent interviewed three candidates, Suzie, Allison, and our former board member, Matt DeVito. After the interview process, the board received her position, and I quote, "I reviewed resumes. After careful consideration, I am appointing Mrs. Allison Cogan to the position of board president for the Precipiny Troy Hills School District through the board's organizational meeting in January 2024. Ms. Cogan is an experienced board member with close to a decade of experience, has considerable experience working across the different committees, and has served as the board's vice president. I trust that Mrs. Cogan and the members of the board will work together in good faith effort to address the instructional priorities and needs of the district. Allison has done a fantastic job navigating some very difficult issues. She is confident when she presents information, making sure, checking it twice, that it is the correct information to give. She is responsive to all board members, the public, and the administration. I would also like to point out she attends all the legislative meetings as well as the delegate assembly meetings, requiring an early Saturday drive to Trenton. No other vice president or president has shown that commitment. She is also a certified board leader and master board member. Allison has no personal agenda other than serving the district to the best of her ability. For these reasons, I am honored to nominate Allison for the position of president."
Are there any other nominations for president of the Board of Education? Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
No.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
No.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo? Congratulations, you're the president.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. I think my first order of duty is to take nominations for vice president of the board. Are there any nominations for vice president? Michelle?
Thank you. I nominate Allison Cogan for the office of vice president. I echo what Judy had to say regarding Allison's qualifications and commitment, but would like to mention a different consideration. Over the past year, I've had the great privilege of serving with eight colleagues in the Board of Education. Everyone had their own background and experiences, which of course gave them their own unique perspectives. I learned something from each person, whether it was something that helped enlighten me in making a decision, or even in some instances showed me how to approach something. For example, when we were finalizing the recent communications of the Board of Education published regarding the pilots that were considered by the town council, how Allison and Suzie shared their ideas to guide us to the final product was fabulous. I never expected two people who differ so much to work so well together. With that in mind, I would like to see Allison serve as our vice president with Andy as our president. Two very different leaders who would work together to help ensure a balanced and open approach to all the board does this year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Barrios?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate this person. This person has served on the Board of Education for many years and has been a past president and vice president. Last year, she served as my vice president and was able to help me maneuver a very trying period in not only my board of ed life, but in my personal life through the month of April. It is my honor and privilege to nominate Ms. Suzie Golderer for vice president.
Thank you, Mr. Barrios. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, we will call Tedesco.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chaffo, if it is one of you two?
Yes, the first person nominated for vice president was Mrs. Cogan, so we'll start there.
Mrs. Abraham?
No.
Mr. Barrios?
No.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
No.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
No.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
No.
Motion fails. You'll move on to the next.
So now we'll take votes for vice president for Mrs. Golderer.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
No.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
No.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo? Congratulations, you're the president.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. I think my first order of duty is to take nominations for vice president of the board. Are there any nominations for vice president? Michelle?
Thank you. I nominate Allison Cogan for the office of vice president. I echo what Judy had to say regarding Allison's qualifications and commitment, but would like to mention a different consideration. Over the past year, I've had the great privilege of serving with eight colleagues in the Board of Education. Everyone had their own background and experiences, which of course gave them their own unique perspectives. I learned something from each person, whether it was something that helped me, enlightened me in making a decision, or even in some instances showed me how to approach something. For example, when we were finalizing the recent communications of the Board of Education published regarding the pilots that were considered by the town council, how Allison and Suzie shared their ideas to guide us to the final product was fabulous. I never expected two people who differ so much to work so well together. With that in mind, I would like to see Allison serve as our vice president with Andy as our president. Two very different leaders who would work together to help ensure a balanced and open approach to all the board does this year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Barrios?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate this person. This person has served on the Board of Education for many years and has been a past president and vice president. Last year, she served as my vice president and was able to help me maneuver a very trying period in not only my board of ed life, but in my personal life through the month of April. It is my honor and privilege to nominate Ms. Suzie Golderer for vice president.
Thank you, Mr. Barrios. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, we will call Tedesco.
Just to clear, Mr. Chaffo, for this one, you two.
Yes, the first person nominated for vice president was Mrs. Cogan, so we'll start there.
Mrs. Abraham?
No.
Mr. Barrios?
No.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
No.
Mrs. Mayer?
No.
Mr. Raye?
No.
Mrs. Chappell?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
No.
Motion fails. You'll move on to the next.
So now we'll take votes for vice president for Mrs. Golderer.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
No.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
No.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Congratulations, Suzie.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're in the right seat. So we will have a break shortly, but we're going to go through a couple of agenda items first, and we'll start with our student committee reports. Let's see, you want to flip a coin? Who wants to go first? Ms. Smith? Okay.
I hope everyone had a happy holiday season. On December 18th, the PHS Red Hawk logo design contest was announced. Students have the opportunity to design a new Red Hawk logo for the school. Italian Club made strufly on Tuesday, December 19th. UNICEF celebrated holiday cheer and giving back by hosting a holiday movie night Wednesday, December 20th, in the Media Center at 5:45. They watched the Polar Express and made holiday cards to send to the local children's hospital. Key Club was selling hot chocolate grams on the 19th and 20th during lunch to be delivered to homeroom on Friday, the 22nd. Interact Club sold candy cane grams on the 19th, 20th, and 21st to be delivered on the 22nd for $2, as well as a game where students would throw a Hershey's Kiss into one of five cups for a prize for $1. The wrestling team had a 40-33 victory over the Walkill Valley Rangers on the 19th. Miriam Candill finished third place in the inaugural Lady Vikings Girls Wrestling Tournament. The boys' basketball team won their games against Booton, Veritas Christian, and Midland Park, which was a part of the Butler Holiday Tournament. The girls' basketball team won the Butler Holiday Tournament. Elective teachers visited CMS to introduce incoming freshmen to the classes offered at PHS. Tonight is the eighth grade open house where students and parents can look at the sports and clubs that they can participate in school next year. Today, the environmental club finished watching The Biggest Little Farm, a documentary about what it takes to run a farm.
Thanks, Almi, Seneca.
Hi, everyone. I hope you had a wonderful break. A race club had a clothing drive to collect women's new or gently-used clothes until December 19th. Habitat for Humanity was collecting toiletries until December 19th. There was a project graduation fundraiser at Applebee's on December 17th, and class of 24 can't shake outside of ShopRite for a project grad. The counseling department had hosted scholarship seminars regarding the scholarship application process the week leading up to break. The mystery and true crime course went to go see the movie Killers of the Flower Moon, which was based on true events in the late 1920s in Oklahoma, where many Native Americans then considered the wealthiest people per capita as a result of oil discovered on their land were mysteriously dying. AP Art and Design and AP Art History visited the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York. STEM pathways brought in reps from 3D pets as well as former FBI agents for the STEM presentations. Before break, PHHS Chamber Choir sang carols to welcome Santa at the Friends of Lake Precipiny Winter Fest event. The AP French class took a tour of the UN in New York to learn about how the UN promotes and maintains peace in the world, improves health, and provides humanitarian aid, and protects human rights, as well as promoting sustainable practices, and worked to protect the environment. Their guide was a man from Senegal, a French-speaking country. Our spirit week before break, leading up to our winter pep rally, was Monday Pajama Day, Tuesday Ugly Sweater Day, Wednesday Santa Hat Day, Thursday Holiday Day, and then Friday Viking Nation Day. We had our pep rally on the day before break with games included, including timed gift-wrapping, where students wrapped staplers, headphones, and the final one was wrapping an administrator. And then we had basketball shootout, and then musical chairs, which is always really interesting to watch when it gets to the last chair. We also had our annual Deck the Hall. Student Council won third place, Habitat for Humanity won second, and the Key Club won first place for the second year in a row. Students had the opportunity to attend the Metropolitan Opera's final showing of Florencia and El Amazonas. This was the Met's final first production of a Spanish-language opera in nearly 100 years, and SHS took its upperclassmen members. The PHHS chapter of the National English Honor Society collected 176 books for pediatric patients in grades K through 8. The PHHS Chamber Choir also visited Lake Precipiny, Littleton, and Eastlake to carol with the fifth graders, and the choir performed popular Christmas songs along with the fifth graders. Thirty-seven students who competed in the FBLA regional competition have qualified to move on to states in March, and nine students placed first, while twelve students placed second or third. And then yesterday, our plaque members led the eighth graders for orientation to show them around the school. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. We're going to suspend tonight's regular agenda. We have our audit report. It's Mr. Scott Cleland that will deliver the report for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. So, like, for, speak louder.
Good evening, everyone, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the results of the June 30th, 2023 fiscal year audit. Before I do that, I want to wish you all Happy New Year and congratulate all the new appointed board members tonight, and hoping good things for all of you. Also, I want to thank Robin Tedesco and Susan Dykstra for all the work they put in to help us get the audit done. We're earlier than we were last year, and the last five years, we've been having this presentation either using a draft or in March, and you're one of 40% of the districts that was, or 27% of the districts were filed on time this year. As of December 5th, which was the deadline, and has been the deadline for the last five years, had been extended till February 5th. This year, they kept it the same, and you are one of 27% of the districts that got a filed report on time. As of today, there's still only 40% of the 600-plus district audit reports filed that were due over about a month ago. So that's the result of five years of continual late information being provided by the state division of pensions, which has put us back in doing our municipal audits, as well as putting us back doing the school audits. Robin contacted me and said, listen, we're ready, we're going for it. So she reached out, we revised our schedule. We originally had planned everything being done by February 5th, and she said, we're ready, let's go for it. So we had to make some tough choices and tell some of our clients that we're not going to meet the deadline, and Precipiny was not one of them. And again, with Robin and Sue's help, we were able to get the audit done and filed by the statutory deadline. From the audit results perspective, the results are good as they have been for the last several years. The opinion is unmodified, which is a clean opinion, the most important part of any financial statement issued. I also want to congratulate the district and the board for the certificate of excellence award. It's the sixth consecutive year for this district receiving that, and again, you're about one of 30 districts in the state that receives that on an annual basis. Audit highlights, very, very good financial position, and you continue to keep reserves and put reserves aside through the budget or through a resolution to fund cap reserve, maintenance reserve, et cetera, to allow you funds to utilize going forward. Also, as part of the audit, we spend time looking at your internal controls, and we also look at your federal and state grants, and I'm happy to report that we did not identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or any other items that we identified that warranted being included in the auditor's management report. So again, overall, very, very good financial results, filed on time, clean opinion, and no findings during the current year. So with that, I'd be more than happy to open it up to any of the questions that the board may have.
Mr. Raye?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Can you just talk about, in addition to cybercrime, maybe just some of your other school district clients? What other vulnerabilities could there be that we should be aware of as a board that haven't come up yet, but may come up in the future?
You talking from a cyber perspective?
Well, cyber or internal control weaknesses that maybe that you found among any other school districts, or is it something that's out there that we should just be aware of?
Sure. I mean, obviously, the cyber is the biggest issue that's out there because many districts in the state have been hit with that, and it's a difficult process to work through. The key is to have the right number of people in place to make sure you manage through your receipts and revenue process, your payroll process, your disbursement purchasing process, because that's where things go wrong. And where we find the most problems in other districts is in the area of quotes, where that's a vulnerable area because sometimes the quotes are not maintained very well. You're required to have at least a minimum of two quotes for certain items over a certain dollar threshold, and what we find is that when we ask for copies of quotes, they either didn't get them, or we had situations where they're not very well documented. And we've had situations, again, not here, where those items turned out to be the same vendor submitting two different quotes, and it's just written on a piece of paper. So that's something that really should be formalized. That's where we find most of the problems and vulnerability, that's doing things with vendors that are, you're violating the bidder quote threshold of laws and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cogan?
Thank you, and thank you for getting it done on time. That was important to us. During the audit, did you see any areas for expense or cost savings that other districts might be taking advantage of that we are not?
We did not. Again, we're not looking for cost savings as part of the audit, but as we're doing your control testing and we're looking at different areas, by all means, if we find something that would address something that someone's doing better or different, we would definitely bring that to your attention, and we didn't find anything that was a major cost savings item. It's just, you know, health benefits are where the big numbers are, and in your payroll. Eighty percent of each of your budget is mainly personal health benefits, so you know, that's where the area where the money is really spent, and other than that, the 20%, there's nothing really out there. You're following the bid laws, you're using co-ops appropriately, you're using quotes appropriately, so there's nothing that we identified. And I think if you look at the, there's like the taxpayers thing that's out there, and I think you're right in the middle of everything, so you know, you're not on the high side, you're not on the low side, so you know, that's more of a board decision than an administrative decision where you want to be, but there was nothing that specifically came up that would be part of the audit process.
And I would assume the same thing would be on the revenue side. You haven't seen other districts getting some kind of revenue stream?
You know, that's the question I get once in a while from board members, and it's a good question. The problem is, it's all driven by taxes and state aid and the grants, and we all know we're coming to the end of CARES Act money and COVID money is no longer going to be there. So everyone's starting to look for ways to identify other revenue sources. I mean, there are grants that you can try to get, but with a grant, if they're only one-year grant, then what do you do in years two, three, and four? So that's a problem. Some districts have started to charge parents for co-ops.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cogan.
Thank you, and thank you for getting it done on time. That was important to us. During the audit, did you see any areas for expense or cost savings that other districts might be taking advantage of that we are not?
We did not. Again, we're not looking for cost savings as part of the audit, but if we're, as we're doing your control testing and we're looking at different areas, by all means, if we find something that would address something that someone's doing better or different, we would definitely bring that to your attention. And we didn't find anything that was a major cost savings item. It's just, you know, health benefits are where the big numbers are, and in your payroll. Eighty percent of each of your budget is mainly personal health benefits, so, you know, that's where the area where the money is really spent, and other than that, the 20%, there's nothing really out there. You're following the bid laws, you're using co-ops appropriately, you're using quotes appropriately. So, there's nothing that we identified, and I think if you look at the, there's like the cost, the taxpayers thing that's out there, and I think you're right in the middle of everything, so, you know, you're not on the high side, you're not on the low side, so, you know, that's more of a board decision than an administrative decision where you want to be. But there was nothing that specifically came up that would be part of the audit process.
And I would assume the same thing would be on the revenue side. You haven't seen other districts getting some kind of revenue stream?
You know, that's the question I get once in a while from board members, and it's a good question. The problem is, it's all driven by taxes and state aid and the grants, and we all know we're coming to the end of CARES Act money and COVID money is no longer going to be there. So, everyone's starting to look for ways to identify other revenue sources. I mean, there are grants that you can try to get, but with a grant, if they're only a one-year grant, then what do you do in years two, three, and four? So, that's a problem. Some districts have started to charge parents for co-curricular fees or athletics, so they've done that. And one of the things that's been out there for a couple of years, which I don't really see people taking advantage of much, would be advertising on their buses. But again, when you get down to it, that's a small piece of the budget. It's not driving a significant impact on your revenue side. So, unfortunately, we're driven by, you know, the four big ones would be your state aid, your taxes, your, if you have transportation relationships with other districts, and then any tuition coming in from other districts where you might be providing a program to a special education student, which can result in, you know, some additional amounts. Now, the one thing we are seeing is interest is trending up, obviously, because the interest rates are up. But there's, unfortunately, there's not a lot of options out there for additional large revenue streams for governmental entities in New Jersey.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cleland. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the early input. We will have a short break, but before we go into break, I need a motion to go into closed session immediately after the break for the purposes of discussing student HIB matters, which are confidential in nature. Action on the HIB matters is anticipated to be taken during this evening's public session. Personal information pertaining to the individuals involved in these matters shall be deducted from the minutes of the executive session and shall remain confidential until such time as the board determines that the need for confidentiality no longer exists and the matters discussed can be disclosed. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? Please, Phil. Second, Susie. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright, I'm so sorry.
Right.
I know. I'm so sorry. No, yes. You know what? I had to move around my feet.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to motion for a recess until 7:15 on the back clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. But I was remiss earlier, so forgive me, from acknowledging Council Vice President Frank Neglia, who's in attendance. I thought I saw Council Missella. There he is, right there, front row, and newly-elected Councilman Matt McGrath, so thanks for joining our meeting tonight. Appreciate it. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. And this year, guys, we're going to keep it very, very short, because as you know, we do a formal ethics presentation in September. However, in your packets are the, is a copy of the Code of Ethics. As board members, you are aware of certain actions that you may not take and certain actions that you should conform your decisions and your actions to. Those are set forth in statute. As part of your reorganization, you are required to read and sign an acknowledgement of those ethics and that you are bound by those, and that should be also in your packet, that once you have signed those, you can return those to Mrs. Benos. It should be a manila-colored or yellow-colored paper. Joni, I think there may be some people that are missing. I think the new board members may be missing.
They already signed them in their.
No, thank you, Rick. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
Correspondents.
Oh, I missed, I apologize. Is there any correspondents to come before the board?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now, any unfinished business? Mrs. Cogan?
Yes, I just wanted to update everybody on the township residential pilots that we've been discussing for the last few months. I believe we started these discussions in November, when we learned about the township's intent to vote on residential pilots, and at that point, we reached out to the township and asked if we could, you know, discuss with them the necessity for funding to come to the school district for the students that would be involved in the residential developments. And we did have a meeting on December 1st. We have not, you know, we've reached out since then, and obviously, nothing came out of that, you know, very first meeting. We since put out two statements indicating, you know, our position and our request for additional funding to assist with the new students that are coming, because we will not be getting any additional tax, share taxes from those properties. We have reached out numerous times to the township and the mayor to ask for an additional meeting, and as of this date, nothing has been set up, and we will, you know, we have, at this point, we have nothing in writing, and we will reach out again tomorrow to attempt to see if we can, you know, negotiate some assistance for the school district.
Thank you, Allison. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, my question goes more in line with a comment that I heard this past Tuesday was that, by some mechanism, that even though there's no negotiation between the Board of Education and the township for any type of benefit from these pilots, that we, the district, could just provide a invoice or some sort of symbolic mechanism in which those requests would be immediately paid for above and beyond what we automatically get as part of our base taxes. I'm sure that's probably something I'm misunderstanding, but could, any way that could be clarified for me?
Not by me, but Mrs. Tedesco, can you maybe just briefly give us an overview of how the Board of Education receives tax revenue from the municipality?
So, at our May reorganization meeting that we have before the start of every school year, we have a tax payment schedule that we put together based on the tax levy that is passed by the board in April. We send that to the township, and the township, that exact document that you see in your bulletin, we send to the township, and there's a specific date that the taxes are due to the, to the school district, and we receive them via wire, and we don't invoice them. That's the only thing that they get from us, and they always, you know, send it on time, and that's how, that's how we get our tax levy.
Mrs. Cogan?
And I just wanted to clarify that the tax levy that we are passing in April is based on the actual, I can't remember the name, the actual taxes assessed by the township. We have no control over the taxes assessed by the township. We can only adj, we can only pass our tax levy based on their numbers.
We, we, when we do the budget, we take our tax levy, and we can only increase it by 2%. So, in essence, it's the tax levy that we have in the previous year increased by whatever we, as a board, you as a board, approve. So, usually, it's 2% as an increase. That's how we, that's how it's calculated.
May I just have one more follow-up question? So, I mean, I'm still, I guess, a little bit of a rookie, only got nine years on the board, as opposed to others. But to the best of my knowledge, that process has not changed. I mean, that process is pretty much the same that I can remember going back many years, right? That's pretty much the standard process?
I've been here 30 years, and it's been the same process.
It's amazing. It hasn't changed. Okay, thank you.
Has not changed.
Any other questions on pilots or school revenue? Hearing none?
Oh, can I?
Mr. Ray?
Of course. So, suppose that there was some expense that was unanticipated and that there was a requirement for additional funds by the school district? And if those funds would have to come from somewhere, in effect, they would come from the taxpayers if there was a shortfall from the town, from the towns end, correct?
Well, they have to, by law, give us the tax levy. That's like something that's written in the regulations. So, we've never had a shortfall that they haven't given us any money.
Okay.
Or any of the tax levy. And if we have an unanticipated expense, we have to shuffle our money around to pay for that expense. So, within our budget, exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
That's how we do that.
Right. As the auditor just said an hour ago, there are no other funding sources for the schools. Tax levies are our funding source.
So, for example, let's say we had a major expenditure, we would have to, we didn't have funds set aside for that, we might have to stop programs like sports and music and other things, right?
It depends on what kind of, like, unanticipated expense it is. So, like, if we had an unanticipated expense that was a capital project, we could appropriate from Capital Reserve to pay for that. But if it's something that is not a capital project, we would be taking it from another line in the budget and hopefully not cutting a program, but finding a source that we didn't need the money for and moving it to the unexp, you know, the unanticipated expense line.
That something would have to change in order to compensate that.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you.
Robin, it was discussed at one of the town council meetings that if there was a taxpaying property, a property taxpaying entity who filed a tax appeal that was successful and their property taxes were reduced and the town had to refund them a portion of that, maybe kind of in the Wheat's question, but can the town bill us back for the percentage of the school tax that they are now having to refund to the property owner, abating to the property owner? Thank you.
I've been asked that question, and I have never heard that happen in any school district. I've never heard my colleagues say that. So, if that has happened, I do, I do not know about that.
Just can, I know of no legal mechanism by which that happens.
Thank you. Mrs. Goldrur?
Okay. The mayor did say that at some point, in one of the meetings, that at some point, he would probably look for, to get back any money from tax appeals. So, one of the things that we should consider doing is asking the town council, how, you know, how much per year had they had to be given back previously? You know, so to, to more or less know what, if they, if, you know, if any, if, in any way they require that from us, you know, we could probably try and plan for it, okay? If we go back the last, you know, five years, how much, you know, how much have you lost in revenue from tax appeals, then we more or less know what that would be. I mean, but it's, it's a suggestion that we would need to do.
Sure, thank you. We'll, we can be the finance committee, we'll probably rest that with them to, to decide how they would want to do that and get that information.
Okay.
Is my, can you guys hear me? Yeah.
No.
No, you can't hear, you can't hear me?
Oh, no, I can hear.
Oh. Okay. Any other unfinished business? No? Okay, moving, moving on. So, Board Bylaw 0155 rests with the board president, the establishment of board committees, the membership to those committees, and the chair of persons for those committees. So, as has been our practice, I am going to hand out an index card to everyone to write their preferences for board committees, and please return those to Mrs. Benos by the end of day tomorrow. Is that acceptable? Yeah, that's what you like? Okay. If we can do that, that would be great. Okay, I think we are at the approval of the minutes. So, we have regular and executive sessions of November 16th, 2023, and December 14th, 2024. I think that's a typo. December 14th, 2023. My first meeting, Joni. You had to throw that for, that's okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Michelle? And Allison? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Abstain.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes, abstain.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Abstain.
All right, thank you. Superintendent, Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a pleasant holiday season with their family and friends. During our December BOE meeting, a question was asked concerning Islamic Heritage Month. Our schools celebrate Islamic Heritage Month in many ways, which includes a recent diversity, equity, inclusion field trip, where high school students travel to elementary schools to read several books that celebrate a Muslim culture. Islamic history and culture are highlighted in our social studies curriculum with a particular focus in grades eight and nine, as well as through our high school ethics studies course. Finally, our media specialists have a vast number of books available to teachers so that they can use these books as teaching resources to celebrate Islamic Heritage Month. I want to thank Mrs. Tedesco, Ms. Dykstra, and the business office for their excellent work on our clean audit. In closing, I would like to congratulate Mr. Chaffo as our new BOE president and Mrs. Goldrur as our new BOE vice president. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bolton, items 1 through 52, with addendum and read-in items 53 through 58.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions on the superintendent's bulletin? I actually have two. Appendix A, which is the Board of Education meeting schedule, and I know it can be, can be changed, but has anyone vetted that to ensure that there's no conflict with any major religious holidays, any major township events?
I didn't look at all of them.
Okay, but religious holidays, you're pretty comfortable with? Okay, thank you. Yes, Mrs. Goldrur?
Sorry. I do have a couple of questions on the, on the calendar for our meetings, and one would be, I mean, February 8th, there is a MCSBA meeting, it's a virtual meeting, that's not, but on June 18th, that's a Tuesday. June 20th would be the Thursday. I was just wondering why it was a Tuesday at Separsipity High School. And on the one for January 7, 2025, that's also a Tuesday. I was wondering why it wasn't on Thursday, which would be January 9. They came out as Tuesdays. I might have been looking at the wrong calendar.
Did you have people to graduate?
The, which one? The January?
Yeah, for graduation.
June 20th is graduation. Which graduation?
Both.
I didn't see it on the.
I can look into all the dates, but I don't have much.
Yeah, just being cognizant, there was a couple of dates last year that town ran into some, you know, comments on from the public, just to make sure.
Sure.
Thanks.
Right.
We can vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
We can always amend it at another meeting. Sure. I had a second question, probably from Madam Attorney. On number eight, where we named the news sources, where we post our notices, they're both traditional print media, The Star-Ledger and The Daily Record. I know that you have online presence. Is there a reason that we don't include online news sources like Parsipity Focus or Tap Into Parsipity?
So, the, the question was what, why there's, whether or not there's a reason for not including Tap Into. These are the official newspapers, which are legally required. There's nothing prohibiting. nothing prohibiting the Board from doing additional or even including them. But because they're not actual print that's been around and the statute talks about official newspapers, that's why it's an as your official newspaper. You can, you can absolutely.
We do.
Yep.
Okay.
And in the beginning, we don't say Focus, X, and you, that.
Okay, thank you.
Send the meeting notes, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But these are your official.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Superintendent's Bulletin? No, okay. Robin, Secretary? Oh, Mr. Wright?
Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, how much is, how many hours are involved in a psychiatric evaluation? Do we have an idea, or?
That depends. Depends on the psychiatric evaluation. Can't really.
Okay, it's not for any set period of time, then. It's, it's a natural completion of an evaluation. Okay, all right.
Any other questions on the Superintendent's Bulletin? No, okay. Mrs. Tedesco, Secretary's Report, please.
Sorry.
Can we put Neil in the budget?
Sure.
WC 40 for the, as a resolution.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. On tonight's Secretary's Report, we have our 2024 organization motions. Does anybody have any questions? Well, you asked a lot of the questions already.
Questions on the Secretary's Report, okay. New business, is there any new business to come before the Board? That looks like a no. All right, we are at the hearing of the public. At this time, if there is anyone who would like to address the Board, please come up at that lectern, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record, and please address the Chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak. It will be helpful if you would like to address the Board, please come up now and sign the book so that when the last, the first speaker is finished, you're, you're ready. As a reminder, we are videotaping the meeting. We like to keep student privacy as much as we can, so we ask you to refrain from mentioning specific student names. You don't have to give your home address, but just the municipality that you live in. And thank you. Mr. Heller.
My name is Hank Heller, and I live at 10 Fenwick Place in Parsippany for 54 years. I haven't been at a Board of Ed meeting since the passing of my dear and deeply respected friend Mike Stromalow, who sat with many of you here. And he, to me, he was a true Parsippany hero, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak tonight. It troubles me that the three most significant citizen elected authorities in our town, the Town Council, the Mayor, and the Board of Education cannot find a way to communicate to each other and the community with civility and full openness. I think, if I understand correctly, that the following is the main issue, but I might not be correct. I'm talking about the issue of pilots and, and how, in fact, the Board of Ed is, is, is recompensed for the education of the children or people that might come out of those tax-affected locations. I keep reading that on the issues of pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes, that one side, we hear, on one side, we hear that the Board of Ed will not lose any money because of the adoption of pilots, because the Board of Ed is legally allowed a 2% increase in budget each year. That means, I suppose, that no matter how many new students arrive out of the, these new human domicile pilot buildings, that the costs are covered. I don't understand that. And on the other side, the Board of Ed seems to feel that its ability to provide a strong education to all the students of Parsippany schools, because they will be deprived of the 63% of the collected property tax paid by all other taxpayers in the town. And that there, then, that money will be lost due to the adoption of the pilot programs in Parsippany. So I don't understand how, on one side, we're hearing that the Board of, that the, that the students will lose, will not lose anything at all, no matter how many students come from these pilots. And I've also heard that no students are expected to come from the pilots, which I also don't quite understand. But it seems to me, this confused voter, that each side of this discussion should have been discussed in full and negotiated with due respect for each side's needs before a pilot program was agreed to by the Town Council. Perhaps at this late date, the three protagonists could fully explain to the public what is the real effect to the public in accepting pilots, because I don't know. And I have read everything that was published in, in Parsippany Focus, in, in Patch, in Tap.
Mr. Heller, please finish up your comments.
I'm sorry. And I just, I would like to have an explanation. And I think that the many commenters on Facebook would also benefit from knowing that we are all in agreement, not opposed to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? I see one more.
Nancy Chaffo, Five Glen Book Drive. I want to congratulate all the new Board members, Dr. Wright, Tim Barrios, and Andy Chaffo on being newly elected. Wish you all good luck in the near future. And, you know, we have a lot to discuss in our township and a lot to, you know, lose in Parsippany with our schools. We want our schools to stay strong, and we need the funds to do that. And I hope the town will provide as much as possible. After much consideration and in the best interest of this Board, and the nepotism conflicts that I have with my husband, Andy, I have decided as of June 30th of this year to 2024 that I will be retiring from the district so that Andy can do what he needs to do for the Board of Education. I'm going to step away. Ending it at the end of the year because it's in the best interest of the children. And I hope you all remember, everything you do here is in the best interest of the children. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for that. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Ms. Councilman, Ocella.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Dr. Wright, Tim, Andy, congratulations on, on your election, and double congratulations on your election to Board President, as well as Board Vice President, Goldr, on your, on your appointment. I'm also speaking not on behalf of the governing body, because we do have other members here who might have different opinions than myself. But I, I wanted to come here to first thank you for everything that you guys have done. I know that the last 30 days has been a challenge, and some decisions on these pilots that have been made will have some very long-term consequences for our town. And you all are to be commended for your valiant effort to try and stop what happened and place the needs of the children above the financial well-being of corporate entities. So my message to you all, and, and I think you're going to be very well-served with President Chaffo, who I have seen firsthand fought with everything that he had at the, the meetings, along with many of you as well. And my message to you is that if and when more pilots come, I hope that you guys will avail yourselves of all means to try and stop whatever might be down the pike, and I wish you all the success in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Council Vice President Neglia approaching the podium.
Greetings, everyone. Congratulations to the new Board members. Congratulations to you, Mr. Chaffo. Mr. Chaffo and I spoke briefly earlier, and him and I have had a very good relationship through the years. We served on the Board together well over 10 years. We've also, you know, served and helped each other in many elections, and I think the world in Mr. Chaffo and his family. And I see nothing but good things coming out of him and I working together. Him and I already said we're going to sit down and talk next week, but I will disagree with some of the things about the pilot, and I, I hope I can educate Mr. Chaffo, and he can educate me as well. Just real in short, a pilot is called pay in lieu of taxes. And Mrs. Tedesco mentioned that the town pays the school board bill, correct? And, and in doing so, whatever that bill is, the town pays it. You, the school board does not get 63% from the corporations directly. They pay the town. And again, the town pays the bill no matter what it is. And, and that's something I think we're going to have to talk about in our meeting, because in my opinion, it does not affect the school board on the education I got on pilots. It, it does bring a lot of money up front to the town, which they can utilize for schools, police, ambulance, fire departments, that I think are very beneficial. I think sitting down and discussing it in a civilized manner, not like what happened at the PAL, and learning about both sides of it can only be beneficial to all of us, and I look forward to doing that with the Board of Ed. As you know, my roots are in the Board of Ed, and some people say I forgot I came from here, but no, I didn't. I love the Board of Ed, I loved being part of it for all those years. At first, I was opposed to pilots, I will say that. But after learning more about them and getting educated and realizing that pilots do not bring more school-aged children to school, affordable housing does, and apartment complexes do. For those of you that may or may not know, Avalon had the ability to build much more than what they're building. But thanks to the negotiations by the mayor, they're now going to be a warehouse and/or a fitness center, which I think is very beneficial, because no school-aged children come out of that. But the financial benefits of a pilot, meaning we get 95% of revenues, do. And also Avalon, with the units they are building, 31 of them will be disabled adults, which means you will have 31 less affordable housing that needs to be satisfied according to state mandates, which is a benefit to the school, because that counts on the affordable housing mandate. So there's a lot of good that can come out of it as well. So I think that's something Mr. Chaffo and I will hopefully discuss, and we can have a good rapport and keep the lines of communication open. I can't say more pilots are not going to happen, I don't know. But if they do, I think educating everyone on what the meaning of a pilot really is will be beneficial to both sides. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. Any other members of the public who wish to address the Chair?
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk, but I changed my mind last minute. Nada Donlan, Lake Hiwata. Just like a quick question. With all the different programs and all the different apartments, and I, I was here at one of the meetings like about five or six years ago, another apartment building was going up, and I had heard, oh, with this, you know, we're only going to have five additional students coming into the kid, to the schools. My kids go to CMS, my younger one, this year alone, she was, it was due to the overcrowding. No fault of anybody else, as the kids were getting into the steps, she was pushed and she fell down a couple of stairs. Not majorly hurt, but she sprained her ankle really badly. She missed tryouts. Thank God, she was like, the school had the fire issues, and she made it to the tryouts like when it was a couple of weeks later. More recently, this past, last Friday, right before the vacation, as the kids were being let out of, was it the pep rally? For lack of a better word, it was like a stampede out. Multiple, multiple kids fell, and I know several of them. And there was kids on top of each other, another one tripped over the face of another one of her friends. It, it was not like, you know, the teachers got them all up quickly, but this is overcrowding. The, you know, and I understand we need them, more and more apartments, more of this, you know, and education is so important. However, we also need to ensure something for the safety of our kids. Right now, like, the safety for my own daughter, I'm really worried about. Not only that, her bus also got pulled over last month by the police because it was speeding. So I don't know if everybody on the Board knows that or not. So as far as my one daughter goes, I'm, I'm really worried about what safety, you know, you're providing for our children. Education, yes. The teachers, I love them. I've never had a problem so far with any of the teachers, so I have full faith. But as we're talking about, you know, education, 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 let's figure out what are we going to do for the safety of our children? Are we going to have to build additional schools? Are we going to have to do some kind of an extension? Are we going to have to work with the town to find out the apartments that are stacking, like the one-bedroom apartments, that I know for a fact that they have friends there that have three or four kids living there? Are, you know, because that's against code. So are we going to, you know, try to figure something out against that? Because overcrowding, for me, is the number one issue, especially at CMS. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to address the Board? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public session. And just a couple of comments, and maybe Bob can help me out with one of them. Mr. Heller, you know, thank you for your comments. I, I don't disagree with anything you said. I do think communication is the key. I do think that there's been a lack of communication. I know the Board has reached out several times to kickstart those negotiations. There was one meeting that didn't bear any fruit, but we are going to continue, continue to do that. And I appreciate the invitation from Council VP Neglia to, to begin those negotiations and discussions. In terms of information, the Board will put out an FAQ on the pilots from our perspective, and we'll ask our Communications Committee, when that's convened, to, to work on that. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chaffo, you know, thank you for that. We, we have talked about conflicts that I faced as a Board of Education member for, for years, since you've been working for the district. They've become more onerous over the years, and, you know, I know how much you love what you do. I know how much you impact the lives of the students that you, you interact with every day over these past 18 years. And I, I appreciate you sacrificing, you know, that for me. It means a lot to me, so thank you for that. Justin and Frank, yes, we will continue the negotiations and the open dialogue, and, you know, we are one of, you know, the, the two largest elected bodies in town with the Town Council. So, you know, having a feud with the Council and the Mayor is in no one's best interest. So let us continue with the dialogue to see if we can reach, you know, compromise. To, I'm sorry, the young lady who spoke about CMS, Dr. Sutter, I'd like to suggest is perhaps she can give her contact information to Mrs. Benos, and then maybe we can look into some of those, those matters. I, I'm not aware of them, I'm not sure that you are either. So perhaps, if you wouldn't mind, Mrs. Benos, at the head table, you can give your contact information to her. Mrs. Goldr?
With respect to the parent from CMS, it, it brought back that during the, the Town Council meeting at the PAL on December 28th, many parents came up, and even students came up and voiced their concern because we have a lot of apparently overcrowding in the schools. And my suggestion, at least, if, if possible, if, if President Chaffo is okay with it, in us getting maybe a breakdown by school as to the number of students per classroom by grade, because a lot of parents spoke about having 28 or more students in their, and, and some of the kids even went up and spoke and said that they have a lot of overcrowding. And this was in the elementaries, and some were Brook Lawn and some were Central. So it would be good for us to, to have those numbers on the Board.
Yes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Benos, but at some point in time, enrollment statistics were part of the Board packet, if I remember it correctly. They, they were there, right, by school, by class, and the number of students.
Yes.
And maybe, Dr. Sutter, if you can look into how difficult it would be to provide that information on a consistent basis to the Board, that might be helpful to Mrs. Goldr's point, to see what, what our enrollment looks like by school, by class?
Certainly.
Thank you, appreciate that. The last point that was brought up was, was, I guess, commonly known as stacking. It's when there are more people living in a, in a domicile than maybe is allowed. And Madam Attorney, I'll ask you to verify this, but that's a building code ordinance issue, right? And that's a township or municipality responsibility to ensure that stacking is not occurring. to ensure that stacking is not occurring?
That is correct. The Board of Ed has absolutely no ability to control that. Just a reminder that the board is actually required to register and enroll any eligible student into its schools.
And we are, again, correct me if I'm wrong, extremely limited in what information that we can provide the town. For instance, we can't provide students that live at a certain address and provide that to the town. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so it really does fall on municipality to ensure that stacking is not occurring?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrios?
May I just ask a clarification question, please? So that also means that if a student in the district, even if it's a stacking situation or whatever the criteria might be, as long as they can prove residency in the town, doesn't matter how, they get educated, right? So we just can't say, nope, this one we don't educate, right? We have to educate them, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Thank you. Yes, Dr. Sutter?
I just wanted to say, congratulations, Ms. Chaffo, and thank you for your 18 years of service.
Thanks, Bob. I think at this point, we are up to a roll call vote on the Superintendent's bulletin, number. Number 11, thank you. Items one through 52, with addendum items 53 to 58, and the read-ins. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chappell? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Okay, please be patient on this one. I need to abstain from number 22 and recuse myself on number 47. Otherwise, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Abstain on number 20, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes, on items one through 52. Abstain on 53 to 58 in the read-ins because I haven't had a chance to read them. Okay. Motion is carried. Any other business before we adjourn? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Raya? Seconded by Mrs. Goldrur. Roll call, please.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before we leave.